All the city council and local contract review board meeting to order. Uh, city recorder Craigor, please call roll.
Blair Shaw.
Here.
Mayor Snyder.
Here.
Youth counselor Calderon.
Here.
Counselor Goodhouse.
Here.
For Newton.
Here.
Council president Lou.
Here.
All right, uh, Mr. Nola, would you mind putting the flag up on the screen? I'll ask everyone to mute and participate in the pledge of allegiance, please. Okay, thank you. Uh, staff or council, any non-agenda items?
None for us, mayor.
All right. We'll move on to public comment. Uh, city recorder Craigor, I think we received, uh, one comment about two different items from one member of the community. Is that correct? Uh, a letter from Kenneth Conklin?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, and that covered a concern about, uh, parking on Bull Mountain Road by Elizabeth Price Park, uh, due to a new through street. Uh, Assistant City Manager Nyland, is this something that you, uh, can or are having staff follow up on? I have not seen anything specific about it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we'll take the comments and make sure staff respond to them.
All right, then the second one is about, uh, trash and litter on 99W and wondering whether there's an organization of volunteers to alleviate that eyesore. Is that also a response that can be followed up on, please?
Of course, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, I don't believe there were any other public comments. Uh, city recorder Craigor, is that accurate?
That's accurate, we just had one.
Okay. Uh, let's move to, uh, phone in public comment. The phone number to dial in is five zero three nine six six four one zero one. Mr. Nola, do we have any, uh, any one in the queue now? All right. We'll move on to follow up to previous public comment. Assistant City Manager Nyland, any follow up on previous public comment?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I do have follow up. Um, at the March twenty-third council meeting, we received public comments about the Colony's apartment complex. The concerns range from maintenance issues to the insensitivity of the name of the complex itself. Coincidentally, members of Washington County were present at that council meeting and heard those concerns directly. And I mention this because the property is county owned. Our team also followed up with Washington County as well as the Housing Authority. And Mr. Mayor, I believe you've also had conversations as well. So it's a long way of saying that community concerns have been shared and we will continue to track this issue and advocate for a successful outcome, which includes capital improvements and a new, appropriate and culturally sensitive naming effort. So thank you for your time and that is tonight's update.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager. Uh, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which is used for routine items, including minutes and approval of contracts or inner governmental agreements. Information on each item is available on the city's website in the packet for this meeting. These items may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Council members may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action tonight. On the consent agenda, we have city council meeting minutes from eight to ten meetings and a, uh, I believe an authorization for the city manager to sign an agreement with ODOT for funding of new sidewalks along Locust Street. Is there a motion for approval?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. City recorder, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor Snyder.
Yes.
Counselor Goodhouse.
Yes.
Counselor Newton.
Yes.
Council president Lou.
Yes.
All right, the consent agenda is adopted unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item number four, local contract review board. Consideration of exemption to competitive bidding and approval of findings for Universal Plaza. We have a presentation by contracts and purchasing manager Moody with, uh, some additional, looks like, uh, consultants and staff. So we ready for the presentation?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Snyder and counselors. I am Christine Moody, purchasing manager. We are here tonight asking for an exemption to the traditional low bid process, allowing for the use of an alternative procurement method, and in this case, an RFP process to select a construction manager, general contractor for the Universal Plaza. The desire is to hire a CMGC before the design is complete in order to provide greater value engineering to the project. As required by Oregon statute, the city must produce certain findings to utilize an alternative procurement method. I will now hand this over to DJ Baxter from Shields-Overletz-Johnson, who is acting as the owner's representative on this project to further explain the justification on the use of a C-CMGC.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Uh, are you able to hear me?
We are.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Uh, uh, thank you for having me tonight. As Christine mentioned, my name is DJ Baxter and I'm with Shields-Overletz-Johnson. I just have a few short slides to review with you. These are in the packet of materials, I believe you have. And then, uh, once I've, uh, gone through these, I'll turn the time back over to Christine. The, and are you able to see the slide presentation that I'm sharing?
We are.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, uh, as a bit of background under Oregon law, um, all public improvement projects must be procured uh, by a competitive low bid method, unless an exemption is granted by the local contract review board. To, to obtain an exemption to that requirement, um, you as the city council, acting as the local contract review board, must approve two key findings, uh, submitted by your staff. One finding is that it's unlikely that providing this exemption would either encourage favoritism or diminish uh, competition for the public improvement. Uh, and the other is that the awarding of the, uh, exemption would result in substantial cost savings to the city. So by way of a very brief, uh, overview of the two contracting methods that we're talking about tonight, the typical method, uh, that's required by state law is a design, bid, build, uh, low bid project delivery method. And in this, um, approach, the typical, uh, sequence of events is that the project is designed uh, to the point where the, uh, bid documents are available. A bid is, uh, advertised and requested and the owner, in this case, the city, selects, uh, the contractor who has come forward with the lowest uh, total cost for the project. And as you can see from this diagram, uh, especially looking at the time sequence on the left, um, the ju- the contractor, the, who will build the project becomes involved late in the project, uh, at the end of the bidding, uh, time and, uh, then commences construction on the bait and does so according to the contract sum that that contractor has committed. Under an alternative method, and there are, uh, several alternative, uh, delivery methods, but the one that we're talking about this evening is called the construction manager, general contractor method. Uh, under that method, the construction manager or the construction contractor is hired and engaged earlier in the design process, uh, allowing for a couple of, uh, differences in the way the project is approached. One is that the construction manager, uh, is available to both the city and to the design team uh, for consultation as the design is being developed. And another is that that construction manager can then seek cost estimates at different points during the, the design process, uh, enabling the design team and the owner to respond in real time, uh, on the basis of those cost estimates. And then, uh, after the project is, uh, farther down the road and the design is complete, uh, the construction manager, general contractor will, uh, go out to bid for, uh, its own subcontractors who will, uh, conduct the, uh, the work, uh, of the trades. So this is a, a short table, just to define the key characteristics of each of these two methods. Does it, the design, bill, bid, build method will have, uh, design complete before the contractor is hired. Uh, and the contractor is selected based on the cost, uh, of the project, again, the low bid. Cost estimated, cost estimates under this approach are typically procured by a cost estimator rather than by the entity who's going to build the project. And subcontractors and trades are selected through a competitive bidding process. On the right-hand column, we'll see the construction manager, general contractor approach, the CMGC, where a contractor is hired, as I mentioned earlier on, during the design process. This allows, among other things, for the contractor to be selected based on qualifications rather than its, uh, cost for building the project. Uh, the cost estimates are then, uh, procured by the contractor at different points during the design process. And just like design, bid, build, subcontractors and trades are still, um, selected through a competitive bidding process. So the process that we, uh, are undertaking tonight is, uh, one where findings need to be established by the, uh, local contract review board. Uh, and the statute lays out the basis for findings, uh, the basis upon which you can reach a conclusion that the alternative delivery method will be, uh, less expensive and will not interfere with competition. And this is a list of the different bases that can under, uh, underpin those findings. You know, uh, in great detail, though, I'm sure, about the, uh, the universal project, the Universal Plaza project. Uh, but in very short terms, uh, it's a large public pro- plaza, which we hope will be a hub of activity in the core of downtown and it will include a state-of-the-art water feature as a central focus of the site. The alternative delivery method that we're proposing is a, uh, construction manager, general contractor, CMGC, as I mentioned. And the key features there are engaging the contractor during the design process, uh, which allows that contractor to advise the owner and the design team during the design process. And this is, uh, these are at points earlier in the project when changes are less expensive. Um, this will faci- facilitate efficiency, uh, cost savings and smoother, smoother project execution. Uh, the findings memo that we provided provides quite a bit more detail, uh, on these items, uh, which are clearly just summary points to try to bring them together. But an over- overview of the summary of our findings, uh, in seeking a CMGC, uh, procurement method are that it will foster competition, uh, because there are numerous contractors who are, uh, experienced in, uh, working on complex projects and, uh, uh, working under a CMGC contracting method. It will produce cost savings, both, um, in the construction costs and in the operating costs, because one of the things that this approach permits is the investigation of lifecycle costs and maintenance considerations during the design process. It should increase your budget stability and certainty, uh, ensure a selection of highly qualified, uh, contractors with specialized expertise where, uh, which are, um, particularly applicable to your project. It should help to minimize impacts on the public during the construction of the project, because again, the contractor and the design team have an extended period during which they can plan for those impacts. Uh, it should also allow safety, cost and schedule performance of the contractors to be criteria for the contractor's selection. In other words, uh, by selecting the contractor based on qualifications, you have an opportunity to examine how well that contractor may have performed in these categories on other projects. Uh, it should also enable, uh, effective planning for, uh, issues such as access, noise, debris removal, coordination with adjacent property owners, all things that you want to have in place to ensure, uh, a smooth delivery of the project. And it should also e- enable unforeseen issues to be addressed earlier in the process and less expensively. And that's a short overview and summary of the findings that we've provided. I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, and will now turn the, uh, microphone back to Christine.
Thanks, DJ. So a notice was published in the day- daily journal of comments regarding the availability of the draft findings. The public hearing to review the draft findings was held on March eighteenth. And there was one request for the draft findings. No contractors attended the public hearing and the city did not receive any comments on our findings. Therefore, the findings attached to this agenda item are final. I will turn this back over to city council if there are any questions. Sean Farley and other members of the SOJ team are here to answer any questions about the project.
Thank you, uh, appreciate the presentation and the very clear detail. Uh, we'll just go very quickly, council president Lou, any questions?
No questions for me.
Counselor Shaw.
No questions.
Counselor Goodhouse.
No questions.
Youth counselor Calderon.
No questions.
Counselor Newton, questions or a motion?
Uh, I don't have any questions and I'll move to approve an exemption to competitive bidding and approval of findings as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. City recorder, roll call vote, please.
Counselor Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor Snyder.
Yes.
Youth counselor Calderon. Oh, I'm sorry, I shouldn't call you for a motion. All right, uh, counselor Goodhouse.
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Newton.
Yes.
Council president Lou.
Yes.
All right, the motion's adopted unanimously. Thank you. Uh, and staff, thank you for a very thorough report that made that topic, uh, very easy to understand for both us and for the public, so thank you. Uh, let's move on to item number five, which is to re- receive an alongside senior housing project plan update. Uh, redevelopment manager Farley. Staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and, uh, Tiger City councilors. My name is Sean Farley, redevelopment project manager. And I'm here tonight with, uh, Josh Corillo and Destin Friedan of Northwest Housing Alternatives, who are our, um, partners in this project. And I brought up the wrong PowerPoint here, so bear with me for a moment. Yeah, it's not showing up in my window for some reason, even though I have it open. Sorry about that. So, um, we last briefed you in November, um, and we wanted to provide an update on the project plan and, uh, provide an opportunity to make any comments uh, you might have. Uh, next slide. So just, uh, briefly, the benefits of the project as we see from the city. Um, this project would be close to, um, the Tiger Public Library, uh, closer to our walkable downtown core and the Phantom Creek Trail and Park. Uh, so a great place for senior housing. Uh, it offers the opportunity for collaboration, uh, with the senior center, uh, and Meals on Will services that are right next door. Um, the city's contributing its property at, um, no cost. Uh, and that allows apartments to be, uh, renting for less. And that's really important to address the affordable housing crisis in the region, especially with seniors. Provides seniors an opportunity to age in place and continue to live in Tigerd. And it furthers the city's commitment to, uh, equitable outcomes and helps to address some of the, the past inequitable housing policies of our past zoning. And, um, on November tenth, uh, city council did authorize the signing of the disposition and development agreement and a form of lease. And that, um, has been executed. And so I'll turn it over to Josh now, who will provide, uh, an update on what's been happening since November.
Good evening, thank you, Sean, and thank you, city council and Mr. Mayor for having us here tonight to provide a project update on our project, senior housing alongside the Tiger Senior Center. Uh, I'm Josh Corio, an affordable housing developer with Northwest Housing Alternatives and also the project manager for this project. I am here with my colleague and director of real estate development, Destin Friedan, who will also be available to answer any questions that you may have. Uh, next slide. So we've been working on this project for about a year and a half now. Uh, sorry, Sean, you mind going back? To the previous slide? Great, thank you. Uh, we've been working on this project for about a year and a half now, uh, and we've come a long way. As I, as I talk more in the next, I'll talk about more in the next few slides, we've made some serious headway securing millions of dollars in funding. We are now a bit past fifty percent completion in the design development phase with our architect and engineer and have engaged in a tremendous amount of community outreach events. Uh, so project updates, this pr- this past January, Tiger Senior Housing was awarded one point two million in federal home funds from Washington County. We were also notified officially that we have been awarded eighteen project-based vouchers and five BASH vouchers to serve our local veterans community with much-needed resident services. Washington County and its community engagement partners have spent the past several months conducting listening sessions with communities of color to solicit their feedback on affordable housing projects in the county. From this list of recommendations that we've received, we've incorporated quite a bit of their input into the project. Next steps for, for us include finishing up design development over the next month and then following up with that by submitting our design review once that is complete. Uh, I would also like to highlight that this project will be bringing in millions of dollars from external funding sources such as the federal government, the metro regional government, tax credit equity investors, as well as debt financing that we, we will be taking out, which will be coming into downtown Tigerd and hopefully continue to support the local economy and the redevelopment, the vast redevelopment that is occurring in downtown Tigerd. Uh, we've also received a lot of interest from folks who are looking to apply and make this project their next home. At NHA, we maintain an interested parties list. Uh, we have been for the past year and there have been quite a bit of interest in being added to that list. Uh, in fact, we received a lot of calls from residents of the WoodSpring Apartments who are interested in renting at our project once that project transitions to market rate housing in the next couple of years. Uh, the level of interest that we received, uh, especially from WoodSpring Apartments, uh, only reaffirms the need, uh, and I, that this project is meeting a critical need in downtown Tigerd. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, we are midway through the design development phase with our architect and engineers. This phase really starts, this phase really starts to hone in on and refine the product details, such as finalizing programming spaces, uh, where they're located, uh, selecting plumbing, lighting and other fixtures to be incorporated into the project. We, looking at the schedule right here on the slide, you'll see that we are scheduled to be, uh, be in the design phase through about October, through the early mid fall of this year, in which case, and we will be submitting for permits, uh, looking like late July. And then we will be engaging in the clothing process to secure both, uh, construction and per- per loan financing, which is scheduled to close in late February of two thousand twenty-two, with construction being approximately thirteen to fourteen months. So we're looking to have the project complete, uh, and apply for a certificate of occupancy about a year from there, which would be about April of two thousand twenty-three. So yeah, lease up is about two years away from now, uh, so we're still, we're not as early as we were in previous updates, but, um, but yeah, we're still a ways away. Uh, next slide. So since we were selected by the city to develop this project in late summer twenty nineteen, we have held over twenty community events since our selection, to ensure that we are hearing the needs of the local, um, since our selection. To ensure that we are meeting the needs of the local community and community of color, we have conducted, uh, a number of events. Uh, of those twenty events, we have held three public webinars, with the first occurring back on June twenty-fifth, the second on October eighth, and the third being just a month and a half ago on February twenty-fifth. Our first webinar focused on resident services and programming and our second webinar was an open house that provided more general project, that provided a more general project update. The neighborhood meeting, uh, really emphasized the design component of our project. Uh, altogether, these community engagement events have included presentations and discussions with both the Tiger City Council, uh, various community advisory committees, uh, councils and other commissions that we have requested info- that, that have requested information on this project. Uh, next slide. Uh, with all of these events, this project has been heavily influenced by public input since its conception. Uh, for example, looking at the site plan here, uh, one of the first, uh, alterations that we made, uh, after receiving public input from the community pushing the building down the hillside so that it's less imposing. Uh, the be- very beginning of the project, uh, about a year, a little over a year ago, a year and a half ago, uh, the building was actually completely fronting Phantom Creek. And so we shifted it so that it's on, it's on the northeastern portion of the property. Uh, we've also added privacy screens to the rooftop to ensure privacy for the neighbors to the west. Uh, we will not be adding a retaining wall on the northern side of the property, which is something that was discussed previously. Uh, we will be developing a parking management plan. And we've also made trail improvements, or we will also be making trail improvements, uh, with the new pedestrian path on the eastern portion of the property being great separated and accessible to the general public to use and which will enhance trail access from Amara Street to Phantom Creek Trail. Uh, you currently know, um, that folks have to walk through the parking lot to get to the, uh, Phantom Creek Trail. Now there will be a separate grade, separated pedestrian pass, um, which will have a gentle slope and, and be accessible for folks in wheelchairs to use as well as everybody else. We are also going to be spurting up the senior center a bit, uh, which is, which is really focusing on the landscaping and the parking lots, redesigning it to, to make it more efficient and to allow for more parking spaces. Uh, next slide. The next couple of slides, we show the latest elevation design. This particular slide is the west elevation. Looking east from this, which is looking east from the senior center facility, our community room and manager's office are fronting the south end of the building to your right of the slide. We then have a step down into the basement, right about the middle of the property, where we will locate some of our residential units, um, and other cor- and corridors and, uh, mechanical rooms. Uh, next slide. Uh, this slide shows the north and south elevations. Uh, next slide. As you are aware, there is a lot of redevelopment activity occurring in downtown Tigerd. Here are some precedents of building materials and forms in multifamily housing that are occurring in nearby projects. Uh, shown here is the Atwell off main apartments, which is serving as a reference to our design team as we continue to develop and refine our project. Atwell project is a market rate, multifamily housing. It utilizes quite a few materials and heavy articulation of trim work, lap siding, uh, big windows, flat panel siding and articulation of the massing enhanced with balconies. Uh, so this is, uh, just one example of the design that we're looking for, uh, with this project. Next slide. And then here, uh, last but not least, are some rendering of our project for the latest designs. So we incorporated, um, basically, we incorporated one rendering from the northwest view of the property and then also just from the north, uh, portion of the property, uh, looking south. So what you're basically looking at on the top rendering would be our community room, which is where it's currently placed. And that is our update. Next slide and any questions, uh, Destin? Next slide, and any questions? Dustin and/or I will be here to hopefully answer them.
I'll start with one. Thank you for the presentation. You know, we've, the council has continued to get feedback from the neighborhood and from, I know, at least one or two particular individuals that indicate that, you know, they represent more, more individuals in the neighborhood that are concerned about things. It appears like you've all done a fair bit to try to, based on feedback from the neighbors, make the project better and more more suitable for the neighborhood, and I applaud and appreciate that. Can you give us an idea of, you know, how many, from your perspective, how many issues remain with the neighbors that are kind of unresolved from their perspective versus how many you feel like you have resolved?
Yeah, sure. Sean might be to help me out with this. I think we're seeing a lot of the same questions come up again and again. So obviously, parking, as you can imagine, is a constant issue whenever you're doing multifamily housing, and especially true of this particular project. I might count that as still unresolved, as we haven't developed the details of the parking management plan. But I would also say it is unlikely to be resolved. I don't think there's going to be enough parking provided that some of the people that are objecting to the parking situation are going to be appeased.
On that point, what is it currently planned to be parked at per unit?
So we have, correct me if I'm wrong here, Josh, 78 parking spaces? Is that correct?
Correct.
Which, which is an increase from the, how many are existing right now, Josh?
I believe 36. I think it might be 48.
You're right, 48.
And is the 48 exclusive for the housing project, or does that include the senior center parking?
So it includes the senior center parking. So a part of the the project as it was presented to us was, could be available as a shared parking arrangement. The use times of the two different facilities are offset from each other. The senior center gets a lot of business in the 10 to 2 period of the day, and typically, people that are working would be away with their cars during that period of time, during that date period of time. So there's a flex across those situations. Our experience at NHA is that if we park at 0.5 to 1 units for senior housing, we've got plenty of parking for that activity. We have additionally discussed and set that we're going to be available for seniors 62 years and older, which additionally reduces the likelihood that they will have cars associated with their lifestyle. Additionally, we're serving to those project-based and BASH units extremely low-income people, which again is our experience, very rarely have vehicles. We discourage them from having vehicles because it's such a weight on their finances, and we are in a pretty good transit served location. The parking management plan will be set up for the 0.5 to 1 ratio, but we will not do dedicated parking spaces for folks, but we will have dedicated areas and hourly markings associated with those with those efforts so that we can provide the best assurance as possible that residents are not utilizing the parking spaces around the senior center during those heavy peak times for, you know, again, for a period of an hour or two hours at a time, which you would come in to get your lunch and leave for lunch, or come in for an event and leave for an event. And we'll further have parking placards so that we control the amount of resident use of the parking lot to the appropriate level and have those out as a first come, first served, so that they're available.
What is the unit count now with all the various redesign permutations?
It's stayed very, very consistent. We are at 58 units, 57 affordable and one manager's unit.
Okay, 57 plus one. All right, we'll move on to the rest of the council. Sorry, thank you for indulging me in those specific questions. Youth Councilor Calderon, anything?
No, I have no questions. You covered my question about the unit numbers.
Counselor Goodhouse.
None, thank you.
Counsel President Lube.
None, you asked mine. Thank you for the presentation.
Counselor Nanton.
You asked most of mine too, Mr. Mayor. I did have a question. Some environmental issues were also raised, and I assume that when you submit your application for development review, part of your application will include responses like the parking plan and any responses to the issues that have been raised by the community, correct? So they can go in when they're looking at the application and see what, how the development's going to be addressing some of the issues that were raised. Is that, is that going to be part of your application? Is that correct?
Yes, we've got a couple of different applications. We've got the designer review application, and then we've also got a building permit application. The building permit application is definitely a response to those items that you spoke with, making sure that all the environmental issues are, well, I mean, are stayed away from. We don't have any environmental issues right now. We're designing very carefully so that we don't. Fire and life safety issues, building permits, zoning code issues are all dealt with appropriately and legally, yes. There are no issues at this point from a design and buildability standpoint. As, as we were talking about earlier, I think that people will continue to have concerns about those issues, but we have, we have done our best to address them to their satisfaction.
Okay, thanks. That's it.
Counselor Shaw.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I had to add the same question about how many parking spaces. So you asked that one. And also noting, transportation is the second highest cost for families and individuals, so would agree that hopefully not too many of them have that because that's a financial burden. Thank you.
All right, I think we've got our questions answered. I should just double check with staff. Is there anything further, Mr. Fairley, that you're looking for from the council tonight?
No, this is just an opportunity to review the project plan and share any concerns or comments. So you've, you've done so.
Yeah, I would, I would make, you know, make the suggestion that we continue to be engaging with the neighborhood and the community at large. I think there's been a lot of effort there. I would not slow that effort down. And, and to the extent that there are concerns raised, but they are not, you know, the staff and the plan, you know, when you evaluate them in totality, don't support those concerns, we should just acknowledge that and continue to do so, like on parking, for example. I mean, you've made a pretty compelling case for why it's not going to be a major issue and, and, you know, I think that is a story that continues to need to be told and responded to, so I would ask that we continue to be engaging and the project team continue to engage with the the neighbors and any concerned citizens.
We will. We're very diligently answering emails as they come in, multipart questions and giving.
I have seen notes. Thank you, Sean. I appreciate that. All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is item number six, to discuss and fill a public safety advisory board vacancy. Management Analyst Ramos, staff report?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Management Analyst Eduardo Ramos, and I serve as the liaison to the Public Safety Advisory Board. And I'm here really to open the discussion on filling the vacancy of a community representative voting seat on the board. So we have three alternatives for you tonight to fill the vacancy. We contacted seven of the original top 16 candidates. Those seven were based on your council discussion on October 27th of 2020 and the community caucus that was held. Three of the people in the original top 16, two of them withdrew, and one of them did not submit the additional material, but we went ahead and contacted them anyways, just in case their circumstance had changed and they remained interested. And as you'll see in your council packet, two community members did reply, and they do meet the residency requirement traditionally applied to our boards and committees. Mr. Rogers is one that does not meet the residency requirement, but he is interested and was in the top 16 during the community caucus and was mentioned at the October 27th council meeting. So I guess one important note to make is that the board has really only gone through its formative process. You all approved their work plan and topic schedule on at the March 22nd meeting. So the person comes in, I think, at the best point where they're joining the, the policy conversations and recommendation, recommendations moving forward. So we will catch them up to speed with all of the conversations that happened previously, but they will be part of the, the primary part of the board's work. So with that, I'll hand it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you for that, and I appreciate all the legwork that was done to get us to this point, and I know, you know, I'd had some suggestion to staff about how we approach it, but it sounds like you all have taken this and really ran with it. So I felt like, given the process that we'd gone through before, we should start from that point to not start completely over, and I still think that's the right thing to do. Hopefully, the rest of the council's supportive of that. It seems to me that we have, you know, we have an alternate right now who's a non, a non-resident, and I don't know that we can have or should have another that is, we can't have a voting member that's a non, non-resident, and I, and I don't think we can have a, a second alternate who is also not of that group. I don't know if the rest of the council disagrees with me, but it, it, that seems like it would start to get problematic. I think we already are in a little bit of a a challenging situation because of the current makeup of the alternate, so I wouldn't want to make that worse. Does anyone disagree with that? No? Okay. So Eduardo, does that mean that we basically have Sean Stuldryer and Nick Jarmer to consider? Is that essentially what we have if we're eliminating Justice Rogers?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Mayor. And yes, the, one of the alternates is not a Tigard, does not live in Tigard city limits, and then the other alternate is on a leave pending the investigation of the officer-involved shooting.
Right. So that, those are my, those are my thoughts, and that, that puts us at the two. Do people, I mean, we, we had a discussion, I know this was prior to Counselor Shaw and the council, but do we want to just quickly regroup on the two candidates and, and are we prepared to make a decision between the two tonight? Okay. Counselor Shaw, you look like you have things you want to say, and my guess is you probably did your, your homework on this, so what are your thoughts?
Thank you, Mayor. I did do my homework. I'm wondering if it wouldn't be appropriate to ask Counselor Newton, who is the liaison, first if she has an opinion, but, but I'm happy to answer if she does not.
Counselor Newton, you want to?
I do have, I do have an opinion, but I was thinking the opposite. I might want to hear what the rest of the council has to say since I'm closely engaged with the group, so I was going to defer and tell you what I thought after you all spoke, but I do have an opinion.
All right. Jump in then.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Shaw.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Newton. I agree that the individual who is chosen should be a resident of Tiger, and my nomination would be for Sean Stuldryer.
Okay. Let's go to Counsel President Lube.
You know, I had a really hard time with this one, just reading back through the applications and, and looking at the board and, you know, the person who left and just trying to figure out, because I think they have two very different backgrounds, Nick and Sean, and they would both bring interesting perspectives to the table. But looking at the makeup and looking at the applicants, I, I think I would also support Sean Stuldryer as well.
Okay. Counselor Goodhouse, and then we'll go to the two counselors that are on the, on the board. So Counselor Goodhouse.
Yes, I think both of them were one of my, on my list. I know that the one thing is, when we were having a discussion before, we went by what rankings they were, and so I don't know if we want to take that into account this time or not. But, but both of them look good for me, but I don't know if we want to go with that. That's something we've, we thought before was that based off what public votes were, that we, unless we had a reason, we wanted to follow those, those guidelines. So I don't know if that's something we want to still follow from the previous discussion or not, so I don't know if anyone else has thoughts on that.
Well, I think we loosely followed it before. We didn't, I don't think we followed it precisely because we were trying to balance all kinds of things, perspectives, gender, race, et cetera, and so I, I don't know that that would be the, given the circumstances, that would be my primary thinking process here. I, other counselors want to go to more looking at, I, I don't even remember exactly which, how many votes each of them had. I know they weren't in the top, neither one of them, I think, were in the top five or six.
Yeah, and each one of them on their, on their application, it shows, so I think it looks like Nick came in 13th, and then Sean came in at 16th.
Okay, so those are, and, and the difference in those votes, if I recall the distribution, was probably not a whole lot of difference in the actual votes. So I wouldn't use that as a primary consideration, but do others want to do that? No? Okay. Youth Counselor Calderon, why don't you go, and then we'll put Counselor Newton on in the hot seat at the end.
Yeah, I was just reviewing my original notes earlier this week, and it was a very close decision, but I would agree with the previous counselors in saying Sean.
Counselor Newton.
No. That was my, yeah, that was my sense as well. And I had Mr. Stuldryer, I was interested in him the first go-around, primarily because in reading all the applications, he was really open about his lived experience, and I appreciated that, and having worked with the group that I have, as I have, that's one of the great things about that group. Everybody is pretty open about how things affect them. They, they feel, you know, safe and comfortable in talking about that, and as someone who's trying to learn from them and listen, I really appreciate that, so you know, it, it was a hard decision, but I went back to my notes too, and that was one of the notes I made about him initially, and, and so I would support his appointment as well. Thanks.
Okay, well, it sounds like we have clear consensus. Counselor Goodhouse, can you live with that? Okay, so does someone want to make a motion?
I move to appoint Sean Stuldryer to the Public Safety Advisory Board in a voting position.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. City Recorder, please conduct a roll call vote.
Counselor Shaw.
Yes.
Mayor Snyder.
Yes.
Counselor Goodhouse.
Yes.
Counselor Newton.
Yes.
Counsel President Lou.
Yes.
Okay, motion's adopted unanimously, and want to congratulate Mr. Stuldryer for successfully ending up on the Public Safety Advisory Board. I know that was a strong interest of his. Is he, Eduardo, is he in attendance this evening?
No, he is, he is not, so I will follow up with all of. No, he is, he is not, so I will follow up with all of the candidates that expressed interest, uh, to let them know the decision tonight.
All right, please congratulate him and has become, uh, one of the ways we do business in COVID times. Please mail him a City of Tigard pin on my behalf, since I can't present it to him in person. Thank you.
I'll be happy to do that. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
All right, we'll move on to item number seven, which is a discussion regarding, uh, council liaison assignments. Uh, City Manager Reimer.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, good evening, Mayor and counselors. Uh, tonight, just to introduce the topic, is, as the council said, a chance for you to discuss your liaison assignments. And as you recall, typically, this is, this occurs during your goal setting. Well, this year, goal setting didn't occur till just a few short weeks ago, and so there's a delay in the assignments as well. And so tonight, uh, we're suggesting a couple of different approaches the council may want to take, since it already is in April. Um, you may want to, uh, discuss the assignments and leave them as is for the remainder of this year. Or you may want to discuss them and assign, make any revisions, and then make that effective now through the end of 2022. Uh, it's two different approaches you may want to take. It'd also be helpful for us to, uh, understand if the council would like to do this on, uh, every year, annually, or if you'd like to do this on a two-year frequency. And then last but not least is, there is, um, on the matrix, information about the Arts Council and a discussion about if the council would like to have a representative of that. So my understanding to date, we don't have a formal request for that, but at the same time, we know the support of the arts is an important part of our community. And so if the council does want to do that, I would ask that, um, ask us to go back and look at the best way to approach that and ultimately then assign a member to it. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, or I'll turn it back to you, Mayor, and, uh, happy to answer any questions during the conversation as well. Thanks.
Sure, thank you. Um, and Council, I, I want to just make sure, you know, this will be Counselor Shaw's first time going through this process. Uh, we're doing it differently than we have in the past. We waited, uh, some months, which normally we would do this in, in January. Um, I will state my preference at the outset that I think that it takes a fair bit of time to even get up to speed with some of these. And so I would not be in favor of an annual change of some of these or of, of any of them, frankly, from an assignment perspective. But that's just my, my thinking, having done it a while. Um, and, and that's just one perspective. There are also things, and I think we, you know, we ended up in some situations that were a little uncomfortable, uh, earlier in the year, I think partly because th- these all appear like they're things we make decisions about, and not all of them are like that. So I, I would ask staff that we probably need to get a little more specific about, uh, what things are assignments that we actually make versus things that maybe we track on here that are not necessarily our assignments to make. Um, and the Arts Council discussion is one. Like, if we haven't been asked to participate, like, do we just declare, like, hey, we're going to put a city council on the Arts Council? Like, city councillor on there? I, I don't know that we just get to do that. Those are not the, like, to me, that's not, it's not necessarily our, our role. In some cases, these are, uh, boards and committees that we assign or that we, that we control, and that's a whole different story. Um, the other thing I want to just set at the outset is, uh, make the observation that in my review, pre-review for tonight's meeting, there's two major themes through a lot of these committees, um, especially the external ones, and that is either water or transportation. And, uh, you know, there is some benefit to having people, uh, representing or being involved in work in multiple ways with those groups. Now, that's not always possible, like, water in particular. We have so much going on in the water space, it's probably not possible to have one person that's doing all the water, and we've never had it be that way in my time on the council. Um, you know, I was, I was involved in the Lake Oswego Tigard Water Partnership work my entire time as a city councillor, but we had different members of the council that were doing the Willamette water work, um, and, and participating in, in some of those kinds of things. So, uh, you know, I just wanted to point that out because I think as we're making assignments, it may, or, or working through this, it may make sense to be thinking about those buckets of transportation and water. Um, so with that said, um, in the past, we've also kind of, you know, gone through each, each, uh, each committee, and, you know, if the person that's been the representative really wants to continue doing it, then, you know, we give some preference to that. But if someone else is, really wants to take it over or be the primary, then we took, you know, we kind of debate and talk through that. So I'm thinking we're just going to need to put our heads down and go line by line. Is everybody ready for that? And any, any, anybody want to make general comments like I did to begin with?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Newton here. I just wanted to say that I concur with you on the, um, two years. I, I think, you know, to change every year would be difficult. You just kind of get up to speed. And also, having been on the staff, um, you know, you're working with the council liaison, and I think sometimes you just sort of get into a rhythm. So I would concur, my opinion too, is that, um, we stick with the two-year assignments, but that's just my opinion, so.
Counselor Shaw?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, let's say I have a few thoughts. One, um, as somebody who's new to the council, I actually thought annual would be better because it gives you an opportunity to experience the different liaisons and the committees. Um, and I think within a year, you can come up to speed. Of course, two years, three years is always better, but it gives you, it gives each councilperson an opportunity to learn about new issues, whether it's transportation or water or arts or social services and so forth. So my, uh, vote would be for annual. And also, given the fact we are in April, I think it seems to make sense since we've been working with the, as liaisons and emails have been sent, committees have been sent, that we just continue through the remainder of 2021. And then we, as a council, discuss what the liaison, the new positions would look like for 2022. And I agree with clarity on the appointments. Uh, perhaps there's a better way we can, uh, lay out the matrix for those that are external, internal, uh, and what other categories there might be. Um, that concludes my comments.
All right, so we'll check on those in just one moment. I want to make sure before we even move forward with that. City Manager Reimer, who is the official staff person that's going to be tracking our discussion? Just so I can make sure that I know who are, like, someone needs to be staff-wise, taking the official changes and notes here. Who will that be?
There'll probably be a combination of myself, myself and, uh, Assistant City Manager Kathy Knightland.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Goodhouse? You are muted.
Sorry, hit the wrong button. I hit the hand raise. Um, so I, I, I kind of agree the same way. I mean, we're almost halfway through the year. Um, and I know that some of the options to the city manager throughout were, you know, do we keep the same throughout? Um, I'm thinking maybe, my thought would be something of a hybrid kind of that was mentioned, or that Counselor Shaw was mentioning, is that we, we go through this year to continuing this, the assignments we have. And then in January, um, in person, we, we determine what we want to do going forward. And then at that point, we can have more of a thorough discussion of whether or not we want to do year, year by year or do two years. Um, but maybe to give something we're rotating around a little bit more, or, or if something's working, that stays that way. But I, I see that if we're this far into it, that we, we continue the rest of the year with the assignments we have and then, um, have an in-person discussion in January.
All right, we have a proposal on the table that was made by Counselor Shaw and endorsed by Counselor Goodhouse, uh, Counselor Newton, Council President Lube, and Youth Counselor Calderon. You're all going to need to weigh in. Counselor Newton?
Thank you, Mr.
You are back on.
Yeah, I'm doing that again. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I think that proposal's fine. I would make two suggestions, though. I would like to, um, change the Tigard Youth Advisory Council Liaison Assignment to the Tigard Youth Councillor. Um, Emilio does a fabulous job. We're both there. It's a little awkward sometimes because he could report just as well as I could. And I also, we had Megan Turley as our first, um, Tigard Youth Councillor, and she never really connected with the Youth Advisory Council. Emilio was a past president, so he was already, um, connected. And I just saw an amazing synergy with him being knowledgeable about what the council was doing and being able to share that with the Youth Advisory Council. So I would like to suggest one change now, that we make, um, Emilio Calderon, and then in the future, the, uh, Tigard Youth Councillor, the official liaison for the Tigard Youth Advisory Council. And then also probably, uh, obvious, we can delete the ma- the, what do we call it? The Blue Ribbon Task Force or whatever it was, the tax? What was that? The one that counts, the Bond Task Force, sorry. Um, that's no longer, um, exists, so maybe we could delete that one. Thank you.
We may need it. It's the Bond and Levy Task Force, but we.
Right.
We can talk through that. Uh, Youth Counselor Calderon, I wa- I want to check with you on the suggestion that Counselor Newton just made. I had heard that before, like, I knew that that's where, you know, one of the changes that she wanted to make or was suggesting. And frankly, I think it was extremely redundant having you do this. What I will say is that I anticipate there will be variation in both the level of involvement, engagement, and perhaps even skill of the person each year serving in your very important role. And so I'm curious to know what you, like, it'd work great if you were, you know, in the role in perpetuity, but that's not going to be that way. So, you know, I'm, I'm thinking about, I mean, w- we can set it as an expectation, but I think at a minimum, and, and Youth Counselor Calderon, I want to hear what you think about this, but at a minimum, we probably, the rest of the council, needs to be thinking about the fact that we would need to be prepared to sort of step in, um, with what, whoever our backup is if the youth councillor kind of isn't either able to engage or represent in the way that is needed. But Emilio, what do you think?
Yeah, I would agree with that. Um, first to start off, I agree that, um, it is kind of redundant having both Counselor Newton and I both there since we have the same knowledge, we can report to council in the same way. Um, in regards to your comment about having, uh, like, the next youth city councillor, whoever's after me, um, not having like the same level of skill or engagement with TAC, I still think that them attending the TAC meetings would be very, um, helpful for both them and TAC because, um, first of all, TAC is just a great group of kids, and they're always begging to help out with the city more. So I think it can just be a great resource for both the, uh, future youth city councillors and both TAC. Um, I would agree that we should have a backup who is ready to step in, especially if the next youth city councillor, um, like, if they have to do something else on Mondays and they can't attend the meetings regularly. Um, but other, I think it would be a great resource for both TAC and the youth city councillor to work in combination. And I think that TAC would be very welcoming to whoever's going to be next, and it would be a great, uh, it would just be very beneficial to both of them. I know I repeat myself a lot, but if you have any more questions, uh, I think I answered all of them, but feel free to follow up.
Thank you. I think you covered it. Council President Lube, you've had your hand up?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I agree. I think having the youth councillor as probably the primary and main contact for the TAC is a, a great idea, or Tigard Youth Advisory Council, sorry, not TAC. Um, so I am fully in support of that and having, you know, maybe the alternate rep be a councillor who's prepared to step in at any given time. In regards to the council assignments and the frequency, I, you know, coming in two years ago and just, um, drinking from the fire hose, essentially the last time we were doing this, um, and going along for the ride and saying, sure, I'll take that one. Um, I really think two years for the assignments is really important to develop the relationships, um, to really get to know everything that's going on. And I think that there's something symbolic about doing this with a new council every two years, rather than just doing it on a yearly basis. And so it would be my recommendation is to continue it on a two-year cycle, but to regularly schedule it in January when that new council is sat. So there isn't this confusion and this back and forth about what's going on, um, just so we can get those new assignments and move forward. You know, what we want to do this year, since it is already April, whether we continue these assignments or not, you know, I'm open to that, but just in the future, I, I like the two-year cycle.
Okay, but you're open to an alternative this year, given the, and, and just realize that if we're doing this, if we're doing an alternative cycle, it's going to, the next cycle by kind of, will have to be a one-year cycle, um, because of the makeup of the council. We will certainly have turnover in the council. We have people that will be impacted by term limits, so there certainly will be a different council.
Yes.
Um, okay. So, um, what I'm hearing, I'm going to summarize what I'm hearing. What I'm hearing is that everybody's okay with making some minor adjustments, but generally keeping, uh, the assignments for this year through January. We'll have kind of an interim second discussion mid-two-year cycle in January of ni- of this, of 2022 and may make some changes that would be in place for one more year. Is that everybody in agreement with that? Okay. Counselor Shaw?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, my preference would be for the year, but I understand my fellow council members, uh, would like to see a two-year. Um, if that's the case, then we may want to consider going through them. Um, only because I mentioned that because I have transportation experience and expertise that may be beneficial, uh, to share, or I can just attend the meetings and share it that way as well.
Well, I think they've agreed. What I'm getting a sense of is they've agreed this cycle to do it, sort of.
Yeah.
At your request, but then, you know, starting with a new seated council in 2023, January of 2023, probably, you know, if the majority of the council's still in place, uh, that was speaking tonight, I anticipate they're going to want to go back to two-year cycles, is what I'm gathering. And you ma- you may disagree with that, but that's what I'm sensing.
Correct. That's what I was recommending because of the election period going back in 2022. But that, that was the reason, because there's going to be that one-year oddity.
Right. Um, so are you, I, I guess I want to make sure I understand your last comment. Would you like to move forward with your proposal for the next two years that the rest of the council, I think, has just kind of agreed to? Are you okay with that, or?
No, my proposal is to go with our current council, uh, liaison appointments until January 2022 and then meet together as a team and reevaluate the assignments or discuss them. And then we can either go into an annual or a two-year at that point, if that was.
I believe that's what everyone else is agreeing to.
Okay, I misunderstood.
That's okay. I just want to make sure. Counselor Goodhouse, Counsel President Lube, that's what you were agreeing to, correct? And Counselor Newton, okay. I believe that's the common understanding of everybody else. Um, so we will move forward with that. I don't see any disagreements to that. Um, I do think, I want to just quickly go through and make sure that a few of the, like, just things I picked up on. Um, so staff, let's, let's go page by page here. Um, the first thing I saw was the Budget Subcommittee on, uh, on events. Um, I don't know if Toby's on the line tonight, but it occurred to me that we really haven't done that. I, I don't know that we did it last year with the way things transpired with COVID, and do we need to do it again this year? How are we dealing with the events stuff? That's not necessarily in a liaison assignment question, but it's on here, so I'm going to ask about it.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, our Finance Director Toby is not on the call today. Um, we did not hold this meeting, as far as I know, this year. Um, and I think it would be best for me to, um, touch base with Toby just to see in terms of keeping it on the list or not.
Okay, well, I think it'll need to, I mean, I think it'll need to stay on the list. My question was more about, like, are we going to do it? Are there, are we going to have social events? Do we need to allocate the money? I don't know, but not, not something we have to work tonight necessarily. Um, the Southwest Corridor Steering Committee, that, that actually has been disbanded, so that can definitely be removed. I'm on page two, near the bottom. Um, the Tigard Chamber Government Affairs and Public Policy Committee, uh, that is not one that we make an assignment to, so I think that needs to be documented differently for the future. And the Arts Council probably may be the same way.
I thought last time on the Government Affairs one, we did. I thought last time on the Government Affairs, when we did, we did pick as a council who represented that one, didn't we?
Well, the, the chamber's been real clear me, with me, that we don't get to choose it, so no. I mean, I, maybe we did that thinking we did it, but the chamber, the chamber was super clear that they invite someone.
Okay, okay. I remember last time, I think, that we picked Counselor Anderson, because he had his business down there, so I just remember that discussion. So maybe we thought we did, but maybe we did, maybe we didn't actually have the power to.
I, I actually don't even think that's how that went down. I think Counselor Anderson was already on the group bef, so he just said, I'll do it, because I'm already on the group. That was a, that was yet, a different variation of how this could go down, but, um, you know, that's quite different than, than us saying, this is now going to be our representative. Um, so I think that needs to be documented. Um. The Wash, the, what, sorry, the Westside Economic Alliance, I'm now on page three. The Westside Economic Alliance Government Relations Committee, I don't know that that belongs on here, that's just something everybody could attend if they want to. Um, I guess I want to pull people on whether, whether we think that that needs to be a liaison assignment, it just seems odd to me.
No, I saw that on there, I don't know how that got on there, because that's just if you attend or not, so.
Okay.
It's not the invites, that one shouldn't be a committee or not.
So that should just be removed. Um, what else did I see? To, moving down to the Tiger Boarding Committee assignments, uh, Counselor Newton, you were making a comment about the Levy and Bond Task Force, and I had actually made a note about, you know, are we going to re, regroup, uh, or re-engage a group, or either the same or different group on the potential, you know, bond that we're looking at for the future? Um, and I don't know if, I, I don't know what the answer to that is, but I guess I wasn't willing to just, you know, say it is gone forever, but maybe it should be, I don't know.
I hear you, Mr. Mayor, and I think maybe if it could just be adjusted and take out the purpose didn't really fit for me, but if we leave Levy Bond Task Force and we have, you know, that's a committee we could pull together, because Levy Bond, you know, that's a pretty broad topic. So that's where I got tripped up, Mr. Mayor. So yeah, I think if we just, uh, remove the descriptor, that would be fine, or that would make sense to me, I guess, is what I should say.
Okay, and then the direction to staff will be that, you know, as we're working on the facility strategy, um, what type of community advisory group and engagement we need to have, and is appropriate, should be on the project list of things to figure out. And that should probably happen quickly if, you know, if we want to have meaningful input, which is the whole, I mean, that, that's what we're all about. We don't want to just put it in place to kind of have it be a rubber stamp group. I'm on the next page, and down at the bottom is where the youth city councillor would replace Counselor Newton as the primary representative on the Tiger Youth Advisory Council. And those are the, that's the conclusion of my kind of markup of things that were not directly assignment-related. Does anyone else have other, other comments or feedback that is like that? Or wants to say anything else? Counselor Newton?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would just say that if, uh, since the Youth Advisory Council meets at four in the afternoon on a Monday, if you would like me to be the alternate, I could continue to do that. I know most of you have employment that takes you away, you know, you're tied up during the day. So if you would like to, um, be.
You ended up muted, Counselor Newton, at the end, but I think we got the, I think we got the point. I think we're just, I mean, I think maybe we should just assign, I see Counselor Shaw agreeing with that. I think we should just keep, uh, Youth Counselor Calderon on as an ex-officio council member, and he'll have to be the backup to next years. Youth councillor, okay, that's probably not totally permissible, but a good idea. Uh, so Counselor Newton is volunteering to be the alternative rep. Everybody okay with that? Thumbs up? Okay. All right, I believe that brings us to the conclusion. Um, anyone else have anything else they want to share? Uh, City Manager Reimer and Assistant City Manager Nyland, do you have what you think you need from this conversation?
I believe from my perspective, we do, and I'll just check with Assistant City Manager Nyland to see if she does.
Yep, we took, took accurate notes.
Okay. Thank you very much, and we will move on to item number eight on the agenda, which is to consider a resolution extending the city's allowance of furnishings on sidewalks. City Attorney Rahala.
Good evening, council. This is an extension or renewal of a resolution that, uh, you passed last May. Essentially, the city's encroachment code requires an encroachment permit for anything, uh, any furnishing that would be located on a city sidewalk. And so these include tables and chairs for restaurants. As part of the city's COVID assistance, um, council decided to allow a temporary encroachment permit. Um, this would be a free, um, slightly fast-tracked permit, and council approved that last May. Um, that expired at the end of the year, and we currently have an applicant who is wanting one. Um, the encroachment permit allows the city to still maintain, uh, enforceability over things like ADA access, uh, and vision clearance, um, public safety, but it also allows the applicant to have outdoor seating, increasing options during COVID. So, um, again, this would be an extension of what council approved last year, and I can answer any questions.
Questions for the city attorney? Or a motion?
I move to approve Resolution Number 2111.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? City Recorder, please read the number and title of the resolution.
Resolution Number 21 dash 11. A resolution extending temporary encroachment permits for furnishing.
And a roll call vote.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Counselor Goodhouse?
Yes.
Counselor Newton?
Yes.
Council President Lube?
Yes.
Okay, Resolution Number 21 dash 11 is adopted unanimously. Thank you. Uh, we have no non-agenda items tonight. Uh, City Manager Reimer, administrative report.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening again, Mayor and councilors. My teammates are on the call, as well as any community members that are listening or watching. Um, quick follow-up, so as we just talked about on the pre, the item two times ago, uh, Assistant City Manager Nyland and I will work on that revised matrix and, and share that back with all of you to make sure it reflects, uh, the multiple changes that you have. And then we will prepare, uh, for a January 2022, uh, conversation. So it's always strange to still say January 2022, how fast time goes. Also, just a warning, my neighbor is having pictures taken in their house, there's flashes going off, so if I get a little dizzy here, it's just because there's a bright flash that's in my eye the whole time, so. But with that, uh, I want to start by recognizing one of our teammates, uh, for her efforts, uh, in working with our community, working with our organization, and working with the council, and that's Nicole Hendricks, our senior management analyst. Uh, she was here just a couple of meetings ago, uh, talking to you, um, about our audit. And, um, Nicole has taken the lead in many different things, and she is always a positive person, always provides great leadership, is very inclusive in the conversations that she has with teammates from throughout the organization. And so I just want to say thank you to Nicole for embodying what we're all about as an organization, as a team. So kudos to her for her hard work and efforts. Uh, the kudos continue, as I want to thank our finance team for, we were just notified that we, uh, earned the GFOA, or the Government Finance Officers Association, uh, annual award, if you will. Um, we're trying to track back how many years this has been, and, and as we pieced it together, we, we believe it's been 34, uh, straight years. And so, once again, that's a great accomplishment for an organization like this to be recognized, uh, for our efforts. And so thank you to Toby, the entire team, and really the entire organization, because it's about all the work that goes into it, as well as with the council and mayor and your leadership. So, uh, kudos to all of you as well, as well as to Toby and the team for their leadership. Start with, uh, the library. We always like to report on the library, and happy to report that it's National Library Week, so I know our library director Halsted is on, so, um, woo-hoo to all of them. And it's also, uh, Poetry Month, I understand, and so a couple, uh, great, uh, events and, um, recognitions for our library, and a way to celebrate with libraries across the country, across this region, for the great work that they do, uh, serving all of our residents, and as they continue to evolve, even before COVID, but as COVID has come in, uh, ways to just continue to serve the community in a safe way, and realizing that many people are just clamoring to get back in to our library. Um, which on that note, uh, thanks to Halsted, her team, and, um, some of our COVID experts from a risk standpoint and safety standpoint. We are targeting Monday, April 26th, to start our limited in-person services, and so we'll have a variety of services available during that time. Um, obviously, safety protocols will be in place, uh, before we're working with the team, with the community, potentially even some volunteers to assist us, uh, during the time there. And we'll also have our, uh, contact-free library type takeout, but we are going to, uh, change and revise some of the hours as we start, um, in person as well. And so more information will follow on the hours, uh, for both of those, but I want to thank, uh, Halsted and her team, uh, for their leadership and working through this, uh, with many people in our organization to make sure it's a safe, safe environment. I think as everyone knows now, um, the State of the City goes live tomorrow at 6:00 PM, and so we have some viewing parties, and I learned from Kent that we have at least 300 people have now registered to view it during our viewing parties, I believe on Facebook and YouTube. And so, uh, thanks to Mayor and all of you for your efforts, as well as Kent and others that have been involved in creating the State of the City. So we are all looking forward to it. Popcorn is ready to be popped here at our household, and we'll be watching that along with many of you. Also want to, um, I think Kathy worded it well, and she said, we want to make sure that our outreach is engaging and not exhausting. And, um, Kathy and Kent and others have been working to really look at the amount of time to reach out to the community, the surveys that we do, and try to put in maybe some new approaches, uh, to reaching out to our community, just to make sure that as we do reach out, people, like we said, are not fatigued, and they would like to continue to participate and share their comments with us. So just look for new ideas and approaches as this continues to evolve, as we actively engage with our entire community. The courts continue to be busy. Um, just in March alone, the court received over 1,700 citations, and so I'm also happy to report that in order to help us work through the workload that's happening, uh, we just hired Carla Benz, uh, from the city of Milwaukee, where she was there for 10 years in a supervisory position. And so one of the first things that Carla's been working on is hiring a few new teammates, and so we're going through that process right now, uh, for two different vacancies, and we're happy to share that we're going to fill one, uh, with a bilingual candidate, so that'll bring our team at the courts to two, uh, fluent in Spanish-speaking teammates, which continues to be just the way that we want to, uh, serve our community as well. So thank you to Nadine, who's on here, as well as the team, uh, for serving our community in that matter. And just a few last updates. Um, we've all recognized, uh, Youth Counselor Calderon today for his efforts, and so we have been, uh, soliciting applications, big shoes to fill, as I even know after my short time here, uh, but those applications are due on the 19th, so we want to continue, uh, to encourage, uh, youth that are interested in applying for that to please do so, so the council consider quality candidates once again. We also have If I Were the Mayor contest that is out there, we are actively promoting that, and with our private schools and our public schools, the principals and the teachers, and those are due on April 27th, so can't wait to hear about all those responses that we get for If I Were Mayor. And last but absolutely not least, we were just informed today by the Tiger Twalton School District that the groundbreaking for the Art Rutkin Elementary School will be held on April 29th, uh, from four to five o'clock, and I know official invites will be going out, uh, but we just asked that you hold the date, um, as we try to attend that and support our colleagues in the community in the groundbreaking for a new school. And that concludes my report.
Will that be in person, Steve? Steve, will that be in person, or like?
Yeah, I don't have clarification. I had a sense that it was going to be, but I, we will clarify that as well, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors.
Thank you. All right, we have no executive session scheduled. Uh, is there a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. City Recorder, please conduct a roll call vote.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Counselor Goodhouse?
Yes.
Counselor Newton?
Yes.
Council President Lube?
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night. Good night, Tiger.
Good night.